D A T V. And the Greater Dayton Area League of Women Voters present. Meet the candidates. Your chance to learn about the candidates running for office in the November election.
Hello, I'm Diane Herman, member of the League of Women Voters of the Greater Dayton Area, and I'm here today with the candidates running for Dayton City Commission. There are four candidates running for two positions on the Dayton City Commission. The candidates are Ms. Stacy D. Benson Taylor, Mr. Darrell Fairchild, Mr. Scott Sliver, and Ms. Shanice Turner Sloss. Okay, we're going to begin our interviews by giving our candidates one minute to tell us about themselves and why they want to serve as Dayton City Commission. And so we're going to begin with Ms. Benson Taylor.
Good morning. Thank you, Diane, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for having this forum today. My name again is Stacy Benson Taylor, and I'm a candidate for Dayton City Commission. For the last 15 years, I've been the union representative for the employees at the city of Dayton, the ASME bargaining unit employees. I represented those employees through two recessions, the loss of a major airline, the transfer of the convention center, and the current COVID pandemic for a year and a half before I left my job to run for City Commission. I believe in this city, and I believe that it is my experience working with budgets, working with staffing levels, working with the current administration, dealing with problem solving, that positions me to be the best candidate for Dayton City Commission. All of the people who have decided to run have passion for our city, but it's passion plus experience that equals success. And it is my experience that positions me to be the best candidate for City Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson Taylor. Mr. Fairchild, one minute, please, to tell us why about yourself and why you're running for Dayton City Commission.
Sure, and again, thank you for the League of Women Voters. It's always a great pleasure to be a part of you, and thank you for all you do for fair elections and access to voting. I'm a current Dayton City Commissioner. I've been on the commission for three years. I think it's fair to say that over the last three years have been very difficult years, and I've led well during difficult times. I've been tested by fire. Beyond leading through the difficult times, I've had accomplishments, including protecting our water from privatization, getting a plan for our city neighborhoods, and working to strengthen our police and community relations. I asked voters for a second chance to serve on the commission because I know there's still work to do, including implementing those recommendations from the police reform effort. Besides being on the commission, I'm a native Daytonian. I'm the manager of Chaplain Services at Dayton Children's Hospital. And like Shanice Turner Sloss, I have a child in Dayton Public School. So I asked folks to vote for me on November 2nd.
Thank you. And Mr. Sliver?
Yes, thank you.
Tell us about yourself and why you're running.
Yep, thank you. Thanks to League of Women Voters and D A T V for this opportunity. I'm Scott Sliver, candidate for Dayton City Commission. I have a pretty broad skill set. I have a professional background in advertising and marketing. I had the Kings Island account for six years. I've worked on national accounts such as Merrill Lynch and Holiday Inn, Delco, Inland, NCR, when they were still in Dayton. I'm associate pastor at Dayton Vineyard Church, the church that I co-founded in 1990. So I've been caring for the community for over 30 years. I've been running a mobile food pantry for the past decade, providing groceries to hundreds of families. We just started a new outreach in the city of Trotwood. I'm excited about that. I've been appointed by the City Commission to different boards, such as the Landmarks Commission that oversees 14 historic districts. I was on the Community Police Council that was parlayed into the police reform working groups. I was on community engagement. I'm running, pure and simple, because the people I've been serving over the past 30 years ask me to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Turner Sloss?
Yes.
Tell us about yourself and why you're running.
Thank you, Ms. Diane. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity, as well as D A T V. Again, my name is Shanice Turner Sloss, and I grew up in a single-parent home in the southwest quadrant of the city of Dayton in the Residence Park neighborhood. And in that home, my mother instilled in me to get your education, to make sure that you have a decent quality of life. After going away to college, I returned back to the city of Dayton. It was not the place that it once was when I grew up, again, in the city of Dayton in the Residence Park neighborhood. At that time, we had everything we needed within walking distance, a Kroger's nearby, an Esters Market on Hoover Avenue, a number of amenities that were surrounding that area. Today, many of our families in the city of Dayton are struggling. There are challenges that they're facing. We're dealing with the global pandemic that has exasperated our situation. We have a high poverty rate, one of the highest in the country. A number of people are suffering in the city of Dayton. We need intentional leadership with experience. Because of my experience as a former city of Dayton employee, between procurement and administering a number of city projects, I have the experience in the candidate for the position as the next Dayton City Commissioner on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask each candidate the same questions. There are three of them, and you will have two minutes to speak to each question. And then I will move on to the next candidate and give them also two minutes to respond. So starting with the first question, and Ms. Benson Taylor will start us off. What should be the priorities for spending Dayton's share of the American Recovery Fund?
Thank you, Diane, for that question. It's exciting to have the American Recovery Funds come into our city. $138 million is a nice start to address many of the problems that we have. It's funny, when I listen to my opponents, it seems like they've spent the same $138 million several times. And that money has to, we have to be deliberate. We can't just say, "We're going to spend it, spend it, spend it," because it's going to run out. But we have to be intentional in investing in our neighborhoods. The city has already come out with four prongs, and I believe the current commissioner was part of that process, and they came out with four prongs of areas that they want to have people give ideas. Working with the community to figure out whether, and every neighborhood, it's not a one-size-fits-all model. Neighborhoods need streets. Some neighborhoods want their parks improved. Some neighborhoods want more work done as far as vacant houses go. That's a number-one priority for most of the meetings that I sat in. Making sure that the beautification and improvement projects are continued. Issue nine was huge. Both Commissioner Fairchild and Shanice Turner Sloss fought against issue nine. That was what took care of paving our streets, cutting our grass. Those are the things that everybody in this race say that they want to continue, but we have to be intentional with that and intentional with that work. And so we have to listen to our neighbors. We have to listen to the community members. We have to work with our community groups to do the things that are going to improve the neighborhoods. So the majority of that money needs to go out into each of the communities, into each of the neighborhoods. We have to build our neighborhoods from the inside out. And so I would want to see streets. I would want to see vacant lots. I would want to see demolition of homes and improvement of parks and better the infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fairchild, what should be the priorities for spending Dayton's share of American Recovery Funds?
Sure. First, let me correct something that Ms. Benson Taylor said. The framework that the city has put forth actually has six buckets. One of the buckets is for external organizations to make application, and that's the place that has four. So that's only one of the six that she was referencing. And I think we see a difference between Shanice and our opponents because Shanice and I are willing to talk about specifics and to let people know what our priorities are, rather than speaking in broad generalities. And so we know that the money needs to go into neighborhoods. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to invest in our neighborhoods, and everyone across the city can look at our neighborhoods and knows that we need to improve our neighborhoods. What I and Shanice are calling for is let's invest in housing inspectors that can go out and inspect and then have programs back behind those that can help those neighbors fix those problems. We were out in a neighborhood meeting last night, and they said, "You know, it's one thing to go out and inspect the home, and the people can ride it, but if it's an older adult who doesn't have the resources to improve their roof, that roof's not going to get improved." And so we have the opportunity to help that resident. We would also like to see a comprehensive housing plan so that we can build new homes, renovate existing ones, and then if we have to demolish other ones that need to come down. Regarding issue nine, I think Ms. Benson Taylor mischaracterized. We didn't fight against that. We raised questions that were critical to be answered before voters voted on it. When it was first announced and they put their support for it, we were going to fund $4.3 million to an organization that we didn't know how it was going to be governed and how it was going to be accountable. Additionally, we didn't know exactly how it was going to be spent in the city, and we didn't have the accountability mechanism in place to know exactly how that money was going to be used well. So those were legitimate questions around transparency that needed to be asked.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sliver, again, a question. What should be the priorities for spending Dayton's share of American Recovery Funds?
I think the top priority is to make sure that every citizen in the city of Dayton benefits from those funds. Nobody wants to see them squandered. Yes, there are six areas, and one of them is everybody's top priority. We all want to see our neighborhoods improved. I just want to, I do talk in broad generalities. I like to think about the possibilities and the what-ifs. What if our city was cleaner? What if our city was safer and our schools were in better shape? The citizens have spoken into this process about the $138 million, and the top priority that came back out of all those community meetings is affordable housing. So that's a big deal. What if we, what if we just made sure that all our parks had water features that actually worked? And what if they were landscaped and mowed in such a way that people really wanted to go there? What if we tore down the blighted houses that are beyond repair, that are in close proximity to those parks so that people would feel safer? What if we cleaned up and maybe worked on the major intersections like Gettysburg and West Third or Patterson and Wilmington, Valley and Troy Street? What if we worked on the curbing? And what if we inlaid some brick crosswalks, things like that? We all spend a lot of time sitting at intersections, and we could make that more encouraging for our citizens. What if we increased the number of trash containers around the city? Maybe there wouldn't be so much trash blowing around in the neighborhoods. What if we set up designated dump sites? You know, I'm constantly fighting, "There's a dump site, illegal dump site, down the alley from me." What if we set up designated sites that people could take their old mattresses and their tires to a central location, and the city could pick up from there? What if we reopened our rec centers and had youth programming that kids would be excited about? Those are the kind of things that I'm for. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Turner Sloss? What would be the priorities for spending Dayton's share of the American Recovery Funds?
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate the question. First, let me address the baseless claim from my opponent. First and foremost, I think that is a pure distraction. There's obviously a mandate for my candidacy, and it showed as me being the number-one voter in the primary. I think it also speaks to the fact that over a number of years, the status quo, they're simply just, they're threatened by my ability to raise up a number of voters in the city of Dayton with my candidacy along with Commissioner Fairchild. They know that we're fair. We speak truth to power. They know, in fact, that $138 million as the next Dayton City Commissioner will be invested in our neighborhoods, what we have been speaking to for the last 15-plus years. Again, with my experience, we need to go in, address these inequalities, making sure that our neighborhoods receive the resources that they need to thrive and to be successful. In past practices, the status quo and the machine, and anyone and anybody, anyone that is affiliated with the status quo, they know that they don't have the will with all to make sure that those dollars are spent to the fullest of its ability, to make sure that, again, that it is fair and equitable. If they forfeit $400,000, what would they do with $138 million? It's time for us to be intentional and elect those in office who are going to truly work for the people. Myself and Commissioner Fairchild would do just that with our experience. Again, I am the only candidate that has the experience as a former city of Dayton employee. I've managed these programs. I administer these programs throughout the city of Dayton, so I'm the perfect person for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the second question. What decisions made by the Dayton City Commission in the past four years did you not support? Now, let's focus on the issues, please. And Mr. Fairchild will start as our first responder.
Sure. So I'm the only candidate here who's on the record on issues that have been passed that I oppose. The most recent was the budget for this current year. And the issue with that budget was, we were in the midst of, we had just proclaimed in the summer that racism is a public health crisis. The HRC is a critical piece for addressing issues of inequality in our community. Ever since the corruption charges had come out, the HRC had been vulnerable and hadn't, and had been scrutinized and questioned, and it really didn't have focus in the funding and the budget as proposed. So I ended up voting no, because it wasn't about the number of employees there. It was about the fact that it wasn't focused, it wasn't funded, and that the whole organization was compromised and was in the place to be vulnerable, and then it would be ineffective, and then no one would want it because it was ineffective. And we couldn't let it go another year, being ineffective or at risk of being ineffective. And so it needed to be focused and funded. I'm pleased that the other, once I voted no, and people, the community came and started lobbying for it and strength, for it to be strengthened. The commission came along, and we found the money to focus it and fund it. So that's one key issue. And it's critical because you have to make tough decisions. We have limited resources in the priorities. You know, there, some people said, "Well, you know, the whole city needs to be responsible for racism." And that's true, and the whole city needs to be responsible for litter. But you wouldn't close the waste collection department because everyone needs to be responsible for litter, and we couldn't have jeopardized HRC because the whole commission and city needs to be focused on addressing issues of race.
Thank you. And Mr. Sliver, the same question. What decisions made by the Dayton City Commission in the past four years did you not support?
Well, I would start with the issue of police reform. I was on the Community Police Council for the past four years, and then that was, you know, sort of parlayed into the police reform into five different groups. I was on community engagement. And while I appreciate the, you know, the city's focus, I think having that process has been really great, but it's moving, it feels like, at a snail's pace. 142 recommendations have been put forth, and just over 20 have been implemented. And I know the complexities. I know there are legalities that have to be addressed. I know that some of them are training issues, and there hasn't been training recently. I know that just the whole process, it can, you know, it involves funding and the budget and all of that. But I would really like to see that process moved along. I'd like to think that as your next Dayton City Commissioner, that I could move that process along. It was great to be part of that along the way, getting to work with other community leaders, city employees, attorneys, and community leaders that are just amazing. But I think we could, we could kick up the process a little bit and get it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Turner Sloss? What decisions made by the Dayton City Commission in the past four years did you not support?
Well, Ms. Diane, that is a great question. Let me run my list down for you. So let's start with the budget cuts. I'll also say the emergency funds that was used for the KKK rally. I will also say that the city now have an emergency response system in place. The plans for redevelopment of the Paul New Prairie, the dismantling of the Lot Links program, the recent budget cuts in HRC, the recent budget cuts in the Youth and Recreation Department, decrease in funding of, excuse me, then increase in funding in the city commission budget. And then I will also say I disagree wholeheartedly with the use of our federal funds, CDBG dollars, used for ShotSpotter. I think all of these acts and all of these decisions were egregious, and they simply do not show the resonance of the city of Dayton, that they are, in fact, a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Benson Taylor, same question. What decisions made by the Dayton City Commission in the past four years did you not support?
Thank you, Diane. Well, as the union rep for the, at the time when I left ASME, 735 bargaining unit employees, my entire job was based upon questioning the decisions of the administration in the city. So like Ms. Turner, my list is extensive. But most recently, in the last year and a half, what I dealt with was the COVID pandemic and how the commission and the administration handled the COVID pandemic as it relates to PPE and things of that nature. What we needed to do, we negotiated ways in which we could create safe environments for the employees. So unlike many people in this debate who simply complain, my job has been to complain, push back, and problem solve. I also did that with aviation and the convention center. I disagreed with the commission when they decided that there were needs to close the convention center or come up with an alternative for the convention center. But what I did was I didn't sit out the game and yell and holler from the sidelines. What I did was get involved, and so I sat on the task force to come up with the options for the convention center, which is the current model of a city-county hybrid that runs the convention center. When it came to aviation and making the cuts with aviation, I disagreed with the changes in staffing levels, but I also understood, I understand the budget. I understand dollars and cents. And so what I did was I negotiated and worked with the city administration to solve those problems.
Thank you. And our last question, we'll start with Mr. Sliver. Propose a policy or program for the city of Dayton that has not been tried before.
Who's a policy that has not been tried before? I would like to see us, I'd like to see us be more intentional about education. I love the preschool promise. I love that, you know, part of issue nine money went to high-quality preschool and getting children off to a good start. But I think we need to strengthen the relationship between the city commission and the Dayton Public School Board and the schools in general. I think there's a lot more that we could do to shore that up, to even put a mentor program in place so that every child that wants a mentor could actually have a mentor. I've been mentoring in Dayton Public Schools for the past six years, and, you know, it's pretty well documented that kids who can read at grade level, it virtually eliminates the possibility of them being involved in the criminal justice system. You know, Dayton Public Schools has a 60-some percent graduation rate, and if we can, if we can help kids, if we can get more summer programming to help mitigate the summer slide, I think it would just put us miles ahead in terms of giving our kids a chance, you know, and inspiring them to go on to college because kids that graduate from college make twice as much over the course of their lifetime as kids who just have a high school diploma. So somehow, we have to find a way to strengthen that relationship, and that's one of the policies that I would work on. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Turner Sloss, also the same question. Propose a policy or program for the city of Dayton that has not been tried before.
Yes, let me just say this for the record. So I am one of the co-founders for Neighborhoods Over Politics, and for the last six years, my organization and I have made countless recommendations to the city of Dayton, to the city of Dayton Commission, some of which have been adopted, some of which have fell on deaf ears. So as the next Dayton City Commissioner, what I'm proposing to do, as well as with Commissioner Fairchild, is to institute a Fix My Block initiative. The Fix My Block initiative is a programming that will allow residents in the city of Dayton access to low-interest loans as well as grants so that they can, in fact, fix up a number of the repairs that they may be experiencing with their home. I also would encourage existing homeowners to invest in their properties. With the program itself, it will be partnered with other community organizations, other community stakeholders, to really start looking at an aggressive model for demolition for so, some of those properties cannot, in fact, be remodeled or rehabbed. The other thing that I will look at doing as the next Dayton City Commissioner is to institute a program to protect long-term homeowners from unaffordable increases in property taxes by advocating for our county's longtime owner-occupied protection tax-exempt program. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Benson Taylor, same question. Propose a policy or program for the city of Dayton that has not been tried before.
The thing that I would implement that we, and I'd say implement and not try before, I think we need to improve communication. I think it's easy for many people to sit in this forum and say, "We're going to do a lot of stuff" because our citizens don't know and understand what, as a government, we are capable of doing. And so I think in order to avoid misleading the citizens and telling them that we're going to do A, B, or C, we need something like City Government 101. I think we need to make that available for people so that they truly understand what, you know, where the money comes from that we are proposing spending, what that is going to cost when it comes to your services, how we can improve your services with the money that we have available. I think education is key, and so I don't think we've done a very good job of making sure that even if the information is available, is that information clearly reaching the citizen? Is it clearly reaching the neighborhoods? Is it clearly reaching, there are a lot of programs, grants, et cetera, and programs available, but are we making sure that the information is available? The other thing that I would do would go hand-in-hand with that. I'd like to create an innovation council. We have historically been reactive. Everything that we're talking about on here is reactive. We need to start a program of innovation, so I would want to create an innovation council that would include high school students, college students, young professionals, what I call more senior soldiers, those of us still in the workforce, as well as retirees. The sole purpose of this council would be to look ahead, to discuss what those citizens want to see the city of Dayton looking like in the future. We have enough people at the table talking about the problems we need to solve now. I believe that an innovation council sets us ahead and sets us apart of other neighborhoods and other cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fairchild? Propose a policy or program for the city of Dayton that has not been tried before.
I apologize. I've got an unstable connection. I hope you can hear me now. Great. Again, our opponents, when asked a direct question to come up with a specific program, are just simply unable to do so. Shanice and I talk around specific programs. I'm pretty confident that the city of Dayton is able to pay for housing inspection, neighborhood development, and infill development, renovation, and blight reduction because we've done it. And so I just don't understand the critique of the ideas that we are putting forward, particularly when they're the ideas that citizens have named in the survey about what needs to happen. On Monday night, I appreciate Scott Sliver amplifying the message on Monday night. One of the other areas that Shanice and I have proposed is that when the city of learners process took place, there were four prongs to that. We've done one, the preschool promise. We haven't done the other three, including mentorship, making sure that our K-12 schools are quality, and the one that we're proposing, investing in after-school and summer programming. I'm pretty confident that the city can do that because we've done it in the past, and we can do it again. And so those, and I think we should do that with the rescue funds, even though we have talked about using those for one-time expenses. When we talked to neighborhood leaders in 2018, right when I came on the commission, we did this big process, get citizen engagement. The number-one issue they told us they wanted us to do is to invest in young people, and we have not done it yet. And it's time to do it, particularly when our young people are being hit so hard from the isolation and the uncertainty of the pandemic. And so it's time to invest in our young people. Finally, you asked for something that hasn't been tried. From the time I've been on the commission, I've been talking to the city manager about understanding what infrastructure we have regarding to broadband and what we can do to take that, those resources that we have in place and amplify them for municipal broadband.
Okay, thank you. In closing, we would like to provide each candidate with a minute for a closing statement, and we'll start with Ms. Turner Sloss.
Great. First, again, I want to thank you, Ms. Diane, for hosting us this morning. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters and D A T V. the League of Women Voters and DATV. Listen, we are less than what, uh thirty-two days outside of the election. We're asking for the residents in the city of Dayton to be intentional about who they cast their vote for on November the second. Early voting starts October the fifth. We have an opportunity to right a lot of the wrongs in the city of Dayton from poor leadership and bad policy. Myself as the next Dayton City Commissioner and Commissioner Fairchild are the two candidates who in fact can make sure that we right a lot of those wrongs. We have the experience, the passion, and the commitment to make sure that it's done fair, equitably, and with justice. Um so I'm asking people to be intentional on November the second to vote for me, Shanice Turner-Sloss, and Commissioner Darryl Fairchild. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Um and also now, uh Ms. Benson Taylor will give us um a closing statement.
Thank you, Ms. Diane, uh and League of Women Voters and DATV for this opportunity. The citizens of Dayton know that we need consistent leadership. We need leadership that is clear. We don't need convenient leadership. We have two candidates that are opposing Scott Sliver and I that were running against each other. Ms. Turner wanted to clean house. Commissioner Fairchild is the only person on the the commission to clean house for. Now they're running together as a matter of convenience. We cannot have that. We need clear, clear leadership for our city. We need leadership that doesn't just focus on the negative things about our city. We need leadership that recognizes that there are many things to build upon. And that's what Scott Sliver and I are going to do. Build upon the things that have worked and work hard to improve the things that are not. We will be a brighter future for Dayton. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh Mr. Fairchild, our closing statement.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the League and DATV for this great opportunity. Um Shanice and I ran in twenty seventeen. Our message then was the need to invest in our neighborhoods and to bring more transparency to the city commission. I've done that with one vote, but we know we can do better with two. That's why Shanice and I are running together and we've had a clear, consistent message over years. And the people in Dayton know us because we've been in their homes or churches or streets and we know their needs. And what we've heard clearly from there is that they want to see us invest in neighborhoods and invest in our young people and bring transparency to our city government. So those are what people know us for. We have a track record on all those items and I know that's why people are planning to support us. You know, if someone's giving you concrete ideas and someone's giving you what-ifs, and if someone's talking about priorities and someone's talking about generalities, I think the decision becomes pretty clear. I'm going to go to the one with clear priorities and concrete ideas. I ask you to vote for me and Shanice Turner-Sloss for Dayton City Co- um Commission on November second.
Thank you. And Mr. Sliver, your closing statement?
Yes, thank you again to the League of Women Voters and DATV. Really appreciate this opportunity. First, I want to say if we're, if we're going that direction, that spending a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars uh to bring every house up to uh code, I think that's a colossal waste of money. I think some of it should go to that, but there are a lot of other concerns across our city that need to be addressed. Look, Stacy Benson Taylor and I have, we've known each other for years. We're on the board of the NAACP together. We were both uh involved in police reform. We were asked to run by Jeff Mims, who's a sitting commissioner, who's running for mayor of the city of Dayton. We were asked to run with him as a team because we supported issue nine, which provided quality preschool. Uh you can look around the city now. The roads are getting paved. Police, it protected jobs. We're also endorsed by the county commissioners Debbie Lieberman, Judy Dodge, Carolyn Rice, uh Nan Whaley, and three out of four of the sitting commissioners. We're also endorsed by the AFL-CIO and UFCW. There's a whole lot of time to come up with with ideas and specifics. I give my what-ifs as specifics, but uh I think, I think the the choice of Benson Taylor, Scott Sliver, and Jeff Mims is the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for participating today and we wish you good luck in your campaigns. The League of Women Voters encourages all candidates to run an issues-oriented campaign. Our goal is to educate the voting public and strengthen our elective political process. The annual voter's guide, for which we are known, will be distributed mid-October in the Dayton Daily News, AMI Media Suburban Newspapers, La Vanguardia, and at local libraries, schools, and businesses. Early voting for the upcoming primary begins October fifth at your Board of Elections or you can request an absentee ballot. However you decide to vote, your opinion matters and helps make our democracy work. Thank you.